Let's applaud for yourselves, come on. I'm Bill Taub, president of the Greater Miami Convention and Visitor Bureau. We have a number of our team here, they're going to be speaking. We have our consultants, and I've got to do my South Day story. Everybody's sick of hearing it. My first house, when I started down in 1970, my first apartment was at 144th Street and US-1. And what used to be there?
Dixie Drive-In Theater.
Dixie Drive-In Theater. Anybody remember the Drive-In Theater? There you go. There you go. Remember the serpentarium?
Yeah.
Serpentarium?
Bill Moss.
Bill Moss? He was bit a million times. He died a million times. And then, US-1, if you can believe it, this is how a bus this area town is, was two lanes. Right? Two lanes. So we've come a long way, Peggy. This building was built with hotel tax money. And I believe it was part of the Adrian Art Center project downtown, which was, you know, an important project, but the cost of doing that, remember we have district elections? You have district elections? Yeah. The deal was, real point, was if you're going to have one downtown, we're going to have a beautiful facility in South Day and another facility in North Day. And this is a beautiful, beautiful facility. I think the mayor's had to state it, a county message. We've had some of our annual meetings here, and I think you used to be involved here, right? I don't remember what was marketing, uh, building. So this is, this is a sweet area of town, it's grown up. This is kind of one of the, one of the areas of Hurricane A. This shopping mall was called Pullman. And basically, if you see Mexico Beach, it sounded like Mexico Beach. So that's all behind us. That's all behind us. So, want to give a shout out to Chimal Rivers, which was the Commissioner Moss's district. That's your first one. They had a county commission meeting to... Oh, my goodness. Just one kid. I was going to say, Commissioner Moss had an all-day county commission meeting, wasn't going to be able to make it. And my home, is this central casting? But Commissioner Moss gets it. He has been chair of the county commission, he's been everything. He has, every month, East Streets Miami, used to be, uh, East Streets Miami now, is his baby. And our survey show that we're getting a little cleaner and a little nicer. So, he's had an all-day meeting. We celebrated Travel and Tourism Week, and the commissioner was there. It was a long, long meeting, he just flew down. So, let's give it up for Commissioner David Carr.
Good evening. Let me just say quickly that I flew down. Thank Commissioner Carr, she's on her way as well. And so I thank everybody for coming out. Thank Bill and his team. Let's give them a big round of applause. Again, thank you for being, for coming out this evening. And we need to work together in order to make sure that we bring tourism to all of Miami Day County, but especially to solid Miami Day County. And Bill has been there to help us all along the way, Member Orlando and the whole team. And we look forward to working with them in the future. So with that, have a great evening. I'm going to stick around and hear all the good things that are going on. And I should want to hear from the community, and hopefully, we can take some of your recommendations and suggestions and make some good things happen following us. Thank you.
This is like going to school and having a pop quiz. What a treat. Thank you. Couple of things, we have the mayor of Copper Bay. How many people live in Copper Bay here? How many people want to live in Copper Bay? Let's hear it for the great mayor.
Seems like a lot of people don't know where Copper Bay is in the areas of the county, but we certainly own there. Real.com ranked us the seventh fastest growing, or seventh best city in the United States. So that's something that we're very, very proud of. Yes, because of places like this, South Day Cultural Arts Center here, I wanted to thank the county commission and Commissioner Moss for making sure that we have to like this here. And we are growing quickly. We're doing all we can to make this place a better place to live. All of our components we recognize as a tourism. We just recently went up to the state legislature asking to see if they can give us some more dollars so we can fund an observation tower, one of our beautiful bird sanctuaries, probably more eco-tourism. And as you know, I think South Day's got a lot going on right now. So, I look very forward to the learning ways that we can partner with the bureau to increase tourism in South Day and continue to show off what a jewel we have down here. So I'm really excited you guys are here, and I can't wait to work with you. Thank you very much.
This is our, I think our sixth of 15. I've been in five, one was with Pitbull at Emerge. But I've learned as these go forward, I'm listening more and speaking less, I find that's a good thing, right Commissioner?
Right.
So Lander, you want to kick it off?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Bill. And, you know, Bill, I've had the pleasure of working with Bill for 20-plus years. I guess my quick South Day story, because, you know, we all have a South Day story. I first came to work at the Convention and Visitors Bureau right after Hurricane A. And the bureau, under Bill's leadership, with Mayor Steerhan, who was the presidency at the time, had just secured a federal grant to assist the recovery of tourism after Hurricane A. And that's when I joined the team, and it's been a great ride. I currently now am the chief operating officer and the chief marketing officer. I'll let you guess, Lander, the latter. But I did want to make sure, because there might be some folks in the room that aren't fully familiar with who we are, I do see a lot of friends, but real, real quick, and I'm not going to read all these bullet points, but needless to say, the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau is the official sales and marketing organization for all of greater Miami Day County, Miami County. And that means from South Beach, to South Day, to South South Day, because there is a difference, and I know the difference. In fact, that's why we're having another Town Hall meeting in Homestead, right there at the Sun Hill Theater, another amazing facility. So we're really spreading our wings, and, you know, we do just about everything. We have sales and marketing, we've got social media, we've got PR, but we also have some great other specialized initiatives like sports entertainment marketing, and that's a growing area. And it's something that we're proud to do in partnership with the county commission. We have a dedicated person that focuses on LGBTQ marketing, critically important, we've been doing that for quite some time. Cultural tourism. We like to say that we're one of the first Convention and Visitors bureaus in the country to have a dedicated cultural tourism effort, and that's been a great success. And the one that, the one that's relatively the newest is our multicultural tourism development department, and that's something that was established a few years ago, and it celebrates the diversity of our destination, of our people, our culture, our heritage. That effort is led by Connie Canard, and one of our board members, you know, Carol Hannah Taylor, kind of was the force behind that effort, but I know that another dear partner was sitting right up front, Marlon Hill. Thank you, Connie, you've been very instrumental in working with us on our multicultural tourism effort. So, lots of things that we do, and just in case you didn't know who we are, now you know a little bit more about us. But we don't just do it out of our office here in Miami, we have representatives. These are, these are people that are contracted to represent the Miami brand around the globe. And we've got folks in just about every major market, we're in 53 countries. That is so, so, so important, because our visitors are coming from around the world. So we rely on these individuals to help us with market intelligence, to help coordinate some sales efforts. When we travel out, they're helping us, and not just us, they're helping all the organizations in this community. They lend support to the commission, to the cities, and to other chambers of trade efforts as well. I mentioned culture and heritage momentarily. When we market this amazing destination, we know we've got a lot of excitement in South Beach with the sun and the fun, and that's something that we're proud of, and we should all embrace that. But what your Convention and Visitors Bureau spends, the majority of its time is marketing our neighborhoods, our lesser-known assets. And in fact, that is critically important for us. We have, you know, we started that a couple of years back with our It's So Miami campaign, it's evolved into Found in Miami. And our, our marketing platform, Found in Miami, is exactly that, encouraging people to discover more and find more jewels in Miami. So each area, including South Day, whether it's our website, whether it's in our marketing materials, our ad campaigns, has its own space. So these are just some quick snapshots of some of the things that we've been doing to showcase South Day. We're not going to cover them tonight, today's more to listen. But I did want to give you a flavor that we get how important South Day is, and that's why we've been working with many for a long time on South Day. The other thing that we recently did, or relatively recent, I want to give a lot of credit to Diana, and if anybody doesn't know Diana in South Day, then they must be the wrong South Day. But Diana's been involved in, whether it's economic development, tourism development in the South Day region, she's been a great partner of ours. And she took the lead in working with the Commissioner's office on South Day, Board of Explore. We're glad to be a part of that and support that, and that's something that is currently in place. And then the other thing that we did in the relative recent past, and I want to recognize the Commissioner Moss, who I think is one of these folks, yeah, there he is. We've been working closely, more than ever, on establishing, or in some cases, re-establishing visitor centers. Who would have thought, right, that, you know, visitor centers were going to win the dough over? Nobody, it's like, but that's not the case. In fact, we have been working creatively with organizations and other entities to open up more visitor centers. People want to explore more Miami Day County, and one way to do that is to walk into a visitor center, be greeted by someone that's knowledgeable in their area, and sure enough, pick up a good old-fashioned brochure. I know we've got digital stuff, but especially our international customer, they still want that brochure. So that's something that we're aggressively doing. So enough about us, well, and this is about you, and, and the jobs. You'll notice there's a lot of numbers around, across the room. We're going to quiz you on these at the end, but the ones that we pulled out is jobs, jobs, jobs. You'll notice that's a big party for us. Yes, we're in tourism development, but it's really broadly economic development, so whether it's jobs, which generates lots and lots of economic impact, which also generates a lot of taxes, and some of those taxes go into things like our transportation system, because tourists are paying about one-third of that transportation tax, of the sales taxes, of the half-penny tax that goes towards our public health system. So that's another thing that Bill and our leadership is critically committed to communicating more of, because tourists are definitely paying their fair share to enjoy our amazing community. So let's talk strategic plan. We do this about every five or six years. Last time we did this, we actually had a workshop here. We were in the Black Box Theater, we were in this particular room. And we do that because it's critically important for us to develop a roadmap that will serve as a blueprint for the, not only for the industry, but for the Convention and Visitors Bureau in terms of priority, in terms of recommendations, big picture items that we should account for as we're developing our yearly business and marketing plans. The way we do that, we like to identify an independent third party to facilitate that process, and that process is a variety of phases. The Town Hall tonight is one part, a big, an important part, but one part of a massive and comprehensive process that in a moment the consultants will share with you. But even to identify a consultant, that itself is a very comprehensive, open, RFP, committee-driven process. We have lots of great global firms applying, there was presentations that were replaced, and ultimately, there was a committee that chose the company that you're about to meet and will facilitate the balance at the end of the evening. This firm, we like to, you know, we also like to emphasize that the firm that was chosen, which is Intervistas, I won't pronounce that hash-coating B H B, but more importantly, Intervistas has been working in our community for quite some time. They also happen to be the firm that has worked with our airport for quite some time to help stimulate more direct flights from a lot of great markets. And I go back to what I said earlier, international business, or even domestic business for that matter, but every time I get a new flight from a new destination, and we've had many, Bill just got back from Kenya. We launched direct flights from Israel, from Turkey. I mean, this is our lifeblood, is more direct flights. And then on the other hand, we have our amazing port that keeps growing by leaps and bounds. And all that couldn't be, couldn't happen without the supportive leadership of the county commission, thank you Commissioner Moss and colleagues. So with that, Intervistas, they will, they've been a great partner for this community for quite some time, and now they are your partner and our industry's partner in helping us ensure that the success that we're currently enjoying is something that we will continue to enjoy for many, many years to come. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to their project lead, Sonya Murray.
Thank you, everyone, again, for coming. We know it's the end of your very busy workday, and you all have busy lives, but we appreciate you sharing your life tonight with us. So very quickly, before we get into the strategic plan, I just want to introduce our team. So I'm Sonya Murray, and we have Greg Tally in the back. He's our meeting events and conference expert. We have Greg Oates, he's our media brand strategy and technology guy. And we have Michelle Simmons, who is 20 years in Miami, and she's our outreach expert. We also have another two people that make up a core team of about six of us. We started this project in mid-December, we're going to wrap this up by the end of September, so, and we're in the middle of our data collection phase, which Michelle will talk about. But in terms of the strategic plan, behind you, there is an outline of sort of the major elements that we're going to be covering. Many of you probably performed or been part of the strategic plan for the businesses that you're in, or the organizations that you're in. What we're going to do is going to continue to help drive visitation to greater Miami. We're going to help you look out over the next five years and identify more opportunities that will drive visitors, both the leisure side and the conferences and events side. In addition, we're going to help the GM-CBB to enhance and elevate their role as a facilitator, a supporter, or a leader, depending on the topic, that will help support visitation. And some of you might say, well, why would a place like this, that has, basically since it started as a state, and got many visitors, why would they get a strategic plan? Well, the world is a small place now, and air service, non-stop service, one-stop service, has really helped make this little global village small. So as I'm trying to think about where should I go on vacation with my family, or if I'm looking at planning my next conferences and events place, I have a lot of destinations that have aggressively developed themselves and are coming after me for my business. And Miami is a wonderful global brand, however, we have to continue to keep pushing further and striving more. And so anyway, that's really what is at the crux of all of this. So having said that, Michelle Simmons is going to take over now and talk about our outreach efforts. Good evening. Hello. Actually, 25 years in here, I arrived in 1994 with a six-month-old, and I haven't, well, left off and on, but I still call this home. So I'm helping with the stakeholder and community engagement. We have put together a plan that is made up of a variety of different components. Eighty-five plus one-on-one interviews to date. That means, some of you in this room, some of you may have been a part of that, we have talked to heads of agencies, we've talked to heads of chambers, we've been all over the county gathering information. Meetings and workshops with the board and the GM-CBB management. We will end this process with a visiting workshop. Fifteen Town Hall meetings, you guys are the lucky winners of Town Hall number five. And Commissioner, we hope to see you at Town Hall number something, which is June 11 in Homestead. I think it'll be Town Hall seven, or eight, or maybe even 10 by then. We have talked to so many different people, have given us so much feedback about particular areas. Yeah, oh, yes.
We're all hard to run. I'm going to be like driving with this screen. What is that? I think we all know Commissioner Kavalevini from South Day. Let's, District A, District A, let's hear it for them. Come on up. Dr. Board of Explore, Diana's here. And that's my little screen saver I have in my office that you photographed one time. Board of Explore, would you, would you say a few words of welcome?
So much for the honor of letting me say a few words, and I'm just excited that you're going through this community planning process and updating the strategic plan. And I'm here with my colleague, who, by the way, is responsible for this place, so let's just remember that. And is this not a key, key feature in our, our welcome to South Day and our tourism? And hopefully, you've mentioned, yes, we do have a joint marketing campaign that we developed together with you, South Day More to Explore, we have the pretty pictures. But really, what it was all about was that there was so much to do here in South Day, and I think probably most of you are familiar with South Day, mostly South Day people. So you know that it is really the premier place to live, work, and play. You know, we have a few quirks like traffic, we're working on those things. Just a small, just a small matter. And also that we, we need to have jobs, right? And actually, today, we approved a major project, 180 new jobs, steel mill. Can you imagine? Yeah, producing recycled steel in South Day, right down the street from here. So, you know, especially Commissioner Moss, I don't know why he gets all the deals, but he's got, I am really jealous. But we also have these incredible cities that are working together. We have our mayor from Copper Bay, Mayor Tim Mirva, I'm sure you all met him earlier.
He won, we grew.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much for standing in for me. No, but it's, you know, they have a very, very visionary and aggressive economic development plan, and also Homestead, and, you know, on that one, too, little ways up the road. So, you know, we just think that with the three cities, and Florida City, the fourth, which is not in my district, it's in Commissioner Moss's, and we kind of grandfather in the Pine Crest, sort of as the doorway to South Day, so that's five cities in the corridor. And we just think we got it going. And, you know, we have been so happy to partner with Convention and Visitors Bureau. They have been really our most important institutional partner. They immediately got it, I think someone actually lived down here, something like that, I'm not sure, but they're voters and commute and live here and all that, so they know. So, and we're working with the cruise industry to try to get more of the people who are here for short-term stays to really come and appreciate it, and even purchasing food, locally grown food from South Day, making it part of our hospitality picture. So, you know, as you go through all of this with, you know, I'm sure there's an asset part of it, you know, just remember that there's a lot of on-ground work that the Convention and Visitors Bureau has helped to develop, and, ooh, I see so many fans here today. Helped to develop and will amplify. And yes, Diana Gonzalez has been kind of that common thread throughout many successive planning efforts that really, you know, has the knowledge base. So, I mean, I could actually go on as you could see, but I really would like to, I would like to eat my sandwich and sit down and shut up, but whatever it is that comes together, I mean, tourism is number one, and it's Tourism Month, or is it week?
It's week now.
Okay.
All year long.
So, yes, so number one, and we just know what a fabulous job, and it's, and I love the fact that you're doing all of these public meetings, I hope to see you in Homestead and this is as well. So, thank you very much.
That is one factoid, because of this bonding, it was a few years ago, state law has a thing called the Tourist Development Council, so they're nine members. And because of our partnership here, we were able to get one South Day seat permanently on the Tourist Development Council, so we can, we can all take credit for that. And that wasn't easy, but it's in place. Thank you.
Commissioner Moss, Commissioner Levine-Cavall, I don't know what the next Town Halls will be, but I would say this is probably the Kentucky Derby of Town Halls. You guys show up and show down, as they say, so thank you so much for your presence. We've got some others, I don't know how they're going to hold up to this, but with Simee Chez, Sliders, and two commissioners, I mean, it's because they are active followers. I'm going to put that out there with it on the commissions and see what happens. Okay, so again, we've got a roster of 10 more, and you should have something in your seats that gives you that information. Four focus groups, we had number three of the four. We have one last focus group, or we have another focus group, we may add one. Millennials and people involved in the tech industry. If you have a millennial like me, you can share that person's name with me. It's Thursday, there's still space, and if you know someone who's a part of the upcoming tech scene here in Miami, please share that name, we'd love to invite them. That will be on Thursday from 2 to 4 at The Lab in Wynwood. Seven committee facilitations that are, that's for all the committees that comprise the GM-CBB board and Bureau as a whole. And then we have some stakeholder surveys that we've done. Destination Next is an assessment that was created by Intervistas that has been used across the country, I believe across the world, so we'll get into that. So let's get started with this Town Hall. How is this discussion going to go? We have four key questions, themes that we are going to be addressing individually. Unique South Day experiences. Now, what I want you to know is you need to think, you need to think fast, because when I get to question number one, I could just roll up on you and say, hey, what are your thoughts? And some people are not ready, so let's get ready, okay? Unique South Day experiences, new tourism opportunities, quality of life for residents, and new initiatives for GM-CBB. So the first question, which we will let everyone speak for 20 minutes, what are the existing tourism experiences that are not being sufficiently showcased in this area? What are the existing tourism experiences that are not being sufficiently showcased? So, I'm sure there's somebody who are, I'm here. Oh. Right, right you?
I'll kick it off. Thank you to Commissioner Moss and Commissioner Levine-Cavall for having us here. I think, you know, Commissioner Moss's family's from the Bahamas, my family's from Jamaica, we have lots of other cultural traditions in South Miami County. I think that these cultural traditions could be utilized and showcased through events or journeys more frequently, because I think that we already celebrate them, having friends why not share with the rest of the community. So, whether it's what's happening in Homestead, with the community from Central America and Mexico, or there's so many other cultural traditions that we should celebrate, either around, whether it's Cinco de Mayo, or other events, Independence Days, that could be an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Who would like to go next? We're talking about, we're talking about any opportunities, or any events, or any experiences, especially here in South Day. I'm an adventurer, and I was making a joke to the team that coming down here is a day trip, I need my brown bag, lunch, I don't need coins anymore because there's sun bags. But, you know, sometimes you don't get this far when you live in other areas unless you know certain things to come to. So, keeping in mind that you have some gems or some hidden features that somebody who lives up on the northern, like me, might not know.
Hi, my name is Megan, sorry to interrupt, I want to refer to our CEO from South Day Chamber, she has to about, we just had a conversation about it, South Day becoming like a wedding mega, if you've all been to that, so that could be one of the awesome years.
And I just wanted to remind everyone, we are capturing all your comments, so we're taking them very seriously. If you're recording, so show up.
Yes, we would have to agree, my name is Kathy Garrett, during the state, of course, we are becoming a wedding destination, but in addition to that, access to Biscayne Bay and aquatic experiences, during the state host a lot of water adventures. We do boat tours in collaboration with Biscayne Bay Aquatic Preserve, Biscayne National Park. So I think that's important to highlight in this area, just like the beaches, we have Biscayne Bay in our backyard.
Well, that's very important, because I just wanted to mention the during the state. And then, we don't really utilize much of waterways, you know, for instance, I could envision some sort of a water taxi, or however that would work, from Miami, from Miami Beach, coming down here, maybe when the climate's drop in during, something like this. I mean, you mentioned, you have some excursions, I'm not aware of them, to be honest, even though I know you two blocks away. And I'm there frequently, but, you know, maybe market that even more, and definitely connect it to the tourists that are in Miami Beach, for instance, or of the cruise lines.
Hi, good evening, Jessica Garrett, I'm CEO for Hip Rock Star Advertising, born and raised in South Day, originally from Richmond High, so now I am a proud resident of Copper Bay. Some of the, some of the experiences that I do believe that tourists could be able to really have an authentic South Day experience would be to go to the Deering Seafood Festival, which is annual. which is annual. One of the other things, which is not an experience, but it is the culture of South Dade, it is very family-centric versus anywhere else in South Dade. I don't know the statistics, but I do believe we have more of the A schools in South Dade. Another experience that is not being showcased is a lot of the, I guess it would be, where is Bill? Is it still heritage communities, or what is it now?
We have Heritage, Waterway Cultural.
Heritage Neighborhoods. On Homestead Avenue, you have Carlos's Seafood, you have Jamaican Silver Spoon, you have Caribbean Delight on 160th. They are very indicative of the multicultural that live here. It's just not black and white, it's not Hispanic, it is Trinidadian, it's Jamaican, it is African-American.
Done. Done.
I guess that would be stop.
Your ideas don't add.
I think one of the things that, well, two things that I think we sort of overlooked. If you're in South Dade, you know how important ag is to the area, but we don't recognize how much fun it can be, or how interesting it is, or the different connections between tourism potential and ag, tech potential and ag. There are a lot of mashups happening in this industry that I think get over, you know, sort of get overlooked. Right now, we have a massive salmon farm being developed at the western edge of the Redland. It's going to be one of the largest salmon farms in the world, let's say the world, what the heck word the town hall needs. But the point is, whoever thought that we could say you could have salmon fresh from South Dade, fresh from Florida, like that's, but it's because of our geology that we can do that. But it's not just the salmon, it's all the different things that we grow. People fly to Hawaii to see one thing grow, pineapple. Here, you can see all different kinds of tropical fruits, and we don't really, I don't, it's not that we don't market it, we keep hearing of agriculture as a dying industry. And the reality is, we need to reposition it as something that's much more interesting and more connected to tourism. And then the final thought is, even within Miami Dade County, we need to, we need for the people in North Dade to know that we really are just like a half-day away, we're not a whole-day away. And I think it's really important for people within the county to understand what an asset we have down here. So I'll stop now.
I can get to finish the last one. Just one other thing is, not very far. I mean, we grew up driving down to go and get cinnamon rolls, and I've been doing that, you know, with my grandmother when she was alive. Now I do it with my daughter. So it's just, there are a lot of little hidden gems.
Hi, my name's Mike. I'm with Taste of Redland. And our group encompasses about twenty-two hundred acres of farmland, and we work with about two-hundred-and-fifty different farms. So perfect segue to what you were just talking about. And Redland, you know, and again, thank you to Commissioner Cobb and Commissioner Moss and Bill from the Bureau and Ramon, and Adam, everybody that's done such a tremendous effort, you know, for what's going on down here. And Redland, it wasn't kind of mentioned at mind that we have to remember Redland is our historic agricultural area that isn't really spoken about that way, and it encompasses unincorporated Miami Dade, it incorporates, it has Miami, it has Homestead, it skirts Florida City, and is a gateway to everybody's national park in the Florida Keys. So this is an important vital region of farming, and we're the second-largest economic engine, and we're one of the largest employers in Miami Dade County as well. So a lot of that's overlooked. And if we market that particular region in that way, agritourism at national level is one of the fastest-growing parts of the market and one of the most exciting parts. And as a lot of people mentioned here, from Nausi Farm to what we grow there, the variety of what we grow, we're number one or number two categorically in the nation. And several things that we grow here, we're one of the most important agricultural regions in America. And most cities like New York has the Hamptons, and Boston has the Berkshires, and you've got Napa, you know, and San Francisco Valley. So what you have here is Redland, is that region that's the proximity that is the same as these farming communities are to every major metropolitan market as it grows up. This becomes the ever-important green space, and the space becomes very, very interesting to tourists. When they come in and they see that, and they drive out to a region like this, and they discover places like Redland, we got cascaded waterfalls and wine wreaths and Nausi Farm, and, you know, also a hundred thousand acres of farmland altogether. There's sixty-six thousand acres of the farm. It's tremendous. And it's not something people associate with Miami. So it's an important region. So if we were to focus in area that could really, exciting tourism experiences that aren't being sufficiently showcased, it certainly would be underserved as one of the largest economic engines in Miami Dade County.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having this topic here today. Thank you, Commissioner Nadia Levine, thank you, Commissioner Moss, my name is Tato Nalor Dan. I arrived to Miami with a three-month-old baby and my husband newlywed, and I went to Miami Beach, which I love, Miami Beach, but coming to the Dominican Republic, I was just like, oh my God, what a beach, everything. So I came to Miami to go to Redland, to taste the most wonderful cinnamon rolls I ever had in my life. And I stayed in the Redlands. So what I think, the most important thing is a word of mouth. I think that we have a South Dade vibe. I mean, I came over here for the pizza quiet about thirty years ago, and I'm staying here until the day I die. I love Miami, oh Miami, my God. But South Dade, I think that we have to project that vibe, that a lifestyle is more quiet. I love to go to the Redlands and go to the orchid markets, they're beautiful, there's so much peace. I love to go anywhere here in Miami Dade County, and Homestead. I think that we should do more for downtown Homestead. One of the places that I love to do and go visit the most was the antique shops in Crom Avenue. I think we should revive that, because that's a different flavor to us. And like you said, we have a lot of different communities here, so we are mixed, and I think that we should have a better community outreach, so we can know each other and share our culture. And sharing the culture, we will share the vibe of South Dade. So I love it, and thank you so much for being here today and for giving us the opportunity to speak out. Thanks.
I wanted to address the issue which I do know is a shock racially divided. Unfortunately, I see cook, they cook really great food. I know that the black people are out there. The black people are outdoors, while the white people and the brown people are inside the wall. I know that's really shocking, right? And it's disturbing, because the food to this outside is really hot. I notice all the nets at times, the fire, and the food is spilled on the ground, so it's not appealing. I wouldn't buy anything from there. I feel, and I walk, so I do feel, and I see this all, so it's very disturbing. So I don't like for it to be multiracially, you know, Southern law. I feel that it's really important to see that, because I don't see, I see consumers, but I don't see entrepreneurs, I don't see African-oriented entrepreneurs. And I don't, I think it's extremely demeaning, degraded in the 21st century, United States of America, South, you know, South Florida, to see this really shock racially divided. Black people are outdoors, that's the, that's really disturbing to me, because I'm a native to this nation from New York, and so it is very disturbing. And I feel, I know that I need to address that issue, so at least make it more appealing. I know, so there's a lady too, she sounds hammed, that the weather being there, like with t-shirts, the weather, if your t-shirt could probably have stains on it, smell, you know. So we need to have a place for them, we need to make it more appealing for them, other places, because maybe the mall was too crowded to have them join it, but at least we could have other places. So just so they won't have to suffer, that way their inventory will be destroyed. So that was really my concern. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Who is next? Or are we, are we good with number one? Are we heading to number two? Anything else? So, do we ready for number two? Oh, we have, oh, right behind you, Christian.
Well, I'm so happy that people have identified some of the things that I love the most, so I've been listening. I just want to make sure we don't forget our national parks, because we really are unique in the nation with two national parks. Of course, one of them, more or less, you need a boat. Because there's not, like, I think there is a really nice swimming place, right, in the Homestead Bay Front Park, a beautiful sort of place. But mostly, it's about getting out of the water. And, but that is really unique and special, and there's really good public access, and you can kayak as well as use motorboats and paddle boarding and all of that. And of course, Everglades National Park, which is unique in the world, is a treasure that, you know, mostly, if you go, you see foreign visitors. We really don't appreciate it, I think, here at home. So, you know, just to make sure that we bring that. And then, you know, it's a day experience for people from other parts of the county, and they're gonna go to the national park, and then they're gonna enjoy the stops along the way, to visit diverse eateries and neighborhoods, and maybe catch a performance at night, you know? It's all there. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks very much. We're gonna move on to question two, by the way. Comments?
Our multicultural vice president is in the House. Connie Gennard, somebody mentioned multicultural, culture, neighborhoods. I'm gonna sit down, because Connie's in the House.
Great comments from everybody. Please keep it up. So question two is slightly different from question one. What are the tourism services or products that do not yet exist in this region, but should be developed? Where maybe have you gone in your travels, where you've seen something and said, ah, maybe doing that here?
Thank you. A lot of the residents are saying one of the things we definitely need in South Dade is the water hotels, as a service that certainly can be expanded upon. As well, people have mentioned that Biscayne Bay, as Commissioner Danny Almane-Cobb said that getting on the water is a hard thing. So more access to the bay, through either the boating, kayaking, or walkways, just so we can, or showcase the beautiful Biscayne Bay that we have, which is just, you know, a couple miles off the US line. It's a different world out there.
Thank you. Yeah, we were hearing that today, that there's some pockets of hotel.
I would like to see if we could take advantage of all of the acreage in the Redlands area and do our own version of something like a woodstock. When I was going to Nausi Farm, I just kept looking around, and that's just what I do. I create experiences, so I see stuff. And I'm driving, and I said, wow, look at all that grass. And my husband and kids are looking at it, like, yeah, grass, mom. No, I'm going, this could be the next big thing, if, you know, there was someone who had the funding to develop it, and we were able to bring down. Even before that, we would have to have the beds, we would have to have hotels for those people to stay in, if that were to come to fruition. But that's one of the things that I see.
So on hearing sort of maybe music festivals sort of done right, with the red type, what kind of audience, what are your attractive values, whatever, but not bring people together more than music, right? Right, food.
Thank you. One thing I haven't seen is, we need a trolley down in South Dade that can take us, whether it's all the time or certain times of the year, where we can go and have different experiences, go down to Homestead, go to the Redlands, go to taste of the Redlands, come back up to see a show. We don't have that.
Trolley.
Trolley.
So sort of having access to these communities that we're nearing.
One of the potential, oh, I'm sorry. One of the potential side solutions that kind of mitigates the problem of hotels, because it's a longer project. One of the things that we already have in place, I know that we have the South Dade rail, it's not rail, but, you know, basically on the, I can't remember, like the busway that they're gonna be took. But what we already have in place, okay, are the CSX tracks that go through Little Kendall, Miami Metro Zoo, okay, the park, and then it goes to, stops right in Homestead Downtown, right next to the Intermodal Station, they're currently building, they've been spending a few hundred million dollars on. And that's already in place. If we can get a tri-heel system down here, then you don't have to, because remember, it's only fifteen minutes by train, if you were to have something come down here. You already have the infrastructure, the hotels, everything in the city, you have World Center being built, you have all this massive infrastructure. To bring that caliber of, the same type of tourists that's gonna come down and do that, they're gonna wanna stay in those regions, the beach and other places. So one of the least expensive ways to do it is connect the parks and the systems and everything that's already in place, and zoo and everything, and it will explode, because downtown in Homestead, you have the Cybrary being built, one of the most modern libraries in the world, you have a new movie theater complex, the Intermodal Station, all of it, and the tracks are already there. And CSX right now has put a bit out there, selling those tracks right now. So they weren't planning on before, but they are now. Easy couple years, you can have that set redone, the train down here, and it would vibe us all the way.
So as Bill reminds us all the time, it's about partnerships, right? So maybe from this perspective, you know, how might the GMCCBD maybe have the partner and support this endeavor with?
We're starting a conversation inverted about it right now, because of what they're doing on the backside, to see if they could be a potential public-private partnership of interest, or tri-heel.
Hi, Diana Vega from Sumiame. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. So I second what you guys were saying with regard to transportation, that's one of the biggest complaints that I'm getting from our guests, that they're not able to come to us. And I do travel a lot, and it is one of the easiest boats for transportation to take, the subway or the bus, especially if you go to New York, California, and things like that. So that would be very, very helpful, trolley as well, that would actually be fun as well. Homestead has that for the national parks. One of the opportunities that I see, sorry, did you hear my guy? Is student travel as well. So we do very well with resellers for FITs, for independent travelers, and we are increasingly increasing our popularity with them. However, with student travel, we haven't been able to get into that market, and I know our educational attendance has decreased every year, and it becomes a bigger challenge for the students to be able to come out to us. So it's something that we can't fix right away. However, being something more enticing for student travelers to come to us, and the UK comes out a lot, but they tend to go to New York for the performing arts, they go to Orlando for the attractions. We've just noticed that Sumiame, we won't be able to pull them on our own, so we're gonna need to partner with certain attractions, maybe Frost's Dearing. We do have an MOU with Everglades National Park, which we are trying to figure out how we can transport people, maybe from the zoo to Everglades, and have an experience with both of our attractions. So that's something that we were thinking about for an experience.
So how do you tap into that education market and tell them about the messaging that's happening, all the activities happening here?
So we're looking at how we can, we've gone to SIDA, but the problem is, we're the only ones. So if for somebody that's from the UK that's coming, they say, we're not gonna book in Miami if I'm only going to the zoo. They go to New York, and they go to the different shows, they go to Orlando, they go to Disney, Universal, SeaWorld, Tampa. So there's a lot of things for them to do. So now what we're looking at is maybe partnering with different attractions. So if you, if you look at the magazines, we're looking at them getting a museum, maybe a botany, and just different types of attractions. So we're looking at partnering maybe with Fairchild, either Problem Frost, things like that. It's more like a destination.
But educate and education.
And education, of course. You don't want the, yeah, we're gonna package some sort of education. Like we have wildlife excursions that they can do, and that's what it's fun, it's educational, and hopefully we can attract them to Miami and seeing all of our beautiful attractions, even if they're a little bit up north.
Thank you for your question.
I think a challenge that we have in this area is the lack of communication. We had this issue, we had a committee at one time talking about tourism issues, and we would talk about different events, even amongst tourism people in the room, and they didn't know about them. Not because they're not interested, but we have a lot of different silos, but we haven't figured out a way to break through all of those different silos in the community. There's a lot of, there are many websites, there's a lot of, you know, cyber connection, but somehow, when, when the time comes to say, oh, did you go to the Redland Fruit and Spice Park event? Oh, I didn't know it was happening. And that's something that somehow we need to get, we need to break through that, because the events are there, the interest is there, the activities are already happening, but not everybody is taking advantage of them, because many times, they just don't know that they are there.
Thank you.
More people have more questions than the same people. I wish everybody participated more. But what are the tourism services?
But what are the tourism services or products that do not yet exist but should be developed? When I came to Miami, I visited the Everglades. One of the things that all me, like was awesome, and we don't include them a lot, is the richness of the Native American culture. We have the Seminoles there. I don't know how many things I've bought that they made with their own hands. So I think that this is part of who we are. And we should, you know, empower that community and engage with them and make them feel that they're part of us as well. So please, I would love, I went to Lucidon, Arizona. We need more visitor centers and I'm sure we need it. But also I would like Miami Day County to partner with that rich culture that we don't even look at. You know, I don't know if it means that they don't vote, I have no idea. But no, I'm serious, I care a lot about them. I care a lot about them and they have a lot of richness that we will all enjoy. And we should, that should be part of our attractions. Miami's not just about beaches or anything like that. Miami's about culture. And Native Americans need to be participating, you know? I would love to see that more.
One other thing that I've noticed in my travels, when I'm in Atlanta or New York, they have a lot of things going on outside. Their restaurants, they have outdoor seating. And for Miami to be this meta for great weather, I don't, we don't have it. I go to Pia Ching in the fall and every time I ask, "Can we go to the patio and eat?" "Oh, we don't have a server." "Okay, well, can I speak to the manager?" And it is really a hassle to just try to be able to sit outside and enjoy the weather. We have great weather. And I think that maybe if we develop some more opportunities for people to be outside as opposed to inside and take advantage of what we have that other people wish they have, that might boost us up as well.
So one of the things that I've been focused on for the five years I've been in office, and I don't think we've really made adequate progress, is how to help our agritourism have the kind of technical skill to really maximize. Yes, we have certainly, and again, I want to shout out to Commissioner Moss, who's been working on this for a long time and helped with the vineyards and the bed and breakfast. And, you know, that is, and wedding menus, those things are developing, although there are still some challenges to overcome. But let's say the farms, like every year there's an ag tour, which is like the highlight of my year. It's just so fascinating. You go from nurseries to fish farms to corn to tropical fruit. And they each give an incredible tour when you get there. But, you know, this is a farm taking time off to give the tour. There's really not somebody knowledgeable about how to do tours. And the facilities are not really set up to regularly receive visitors. So, you know, I don't think it should be a daily event probably. But I think, you know, during the growing months, you know, some weekends, it would be really great to have trained docents. And I know we did have March, who was working on this. And there was a hospitality training at Miami Day College. The Miami Day College Homestead Campus does run a hospitality institute. And, you know, I've talked to them about setting it up so that it would be more tailored to this kind of a thing, if there were a demand, they could do it. And it would be very cost, it would not be expensive, is what I want to say. But I think, you know, kind of creating like a kind of a little licensure, not anything too formal, but like certification, that's what I mean. You can do that easily at the college, but some certification that you know the basics and that you have knowledge of all of the amenities in the area, that that will really help a lot. Because people do want to go to these places, but there's really not easy access to many of them, except for special festivals.
Well, and so this is an interesting trend here, right? We want to get closer to food and we want to get away from processed food. And we want to really kind of understand it a lot more. And I think there is a segment that's growing, that's family-friendly, that's also people-friendly, that want to understand this. And how can you more formalize it? I think, how can the GMCDB maybe help with that messaging? You have a very interesting asset here that's different from the Everglades and different from the beaches. But if there was a growing trend to get closer to understanding food and all of its artistry, right?
And tying the food industry with the restaurants with suppliers and tying that all together as part of agritourism. It's like, yes, we're seeing where all this is being grown now. We see fruits maybe that we've not, not familiar with. I'm in Pennsylvania now, I've just been here a short time. So I've seen things that I'm not familiar with. And then seeing them then prepared in a special way. I think if you tie those together, it is farm-to-table, but it's actually experiencing the farm and experiencing the table, not just, you know, knowing that the food can actually experience it.
And I just wanted to amplify something I didn't say that responds to your point. We have something called the Farming School, which is actually across the street from now Sperry Farm. And it's been renovated on the outside, but now they have funds for the internal renovation. With the idea of having a farm, value-added products, classes, a culinary kitchen. So it would definitely be teaching and so on. And there's Pine Hill Museum, which is a homestead-based nonprofit that is managing this. And so there's an opportunity to really turn that into like an agritourism gateway. Yes, and so they are already doing farmers' markets on premises during the winter months. So, you know, it's really, yeah, that's the vision that they have, but they certainly could use support to get there.
And then I wonder what kind of small customized conference events, small, small. And it's a beautiful interior reading space for little concerts and, yeah, it's quite special. Yeah, it's historic building.
Good evening. Jay Rivers, Office of the Attorney, Commissioner D.C. Moss. I think we want to also remind our visitors and those here who are global there, you know, there's more water in Miami than just South Beach. You know, down here we have, actually we have parks like, you know, Biscayne Park, Black Point, Matanavik. So there's a lot of opportunity for water sports, water activities. And I'm sure there's many hidden gems around there that we can remind people, you know, that you might want to lay on the beach and take your boat out and stuff like that. So we want to remind people that, you know, you can come down here for some water activity and sports and live.
Hi, my name is London Connor and I actually am a tour guide. And in fact, 14 years ago, Mr. Talbot, he probably doesn't remember this, introduced me in a meeting as the very first certified tour guide in Miami Day. I wasn't the first, I was in the first class. But in those days, they actually were emphasizing the tour guide class because they wanted to create a certification for the counting. And it never happened, unfortunately. So, you know, what Dennis said.
Stay involved.
Anyway, what I wanted to say, I do tours on a regular basis. I do them on cruise ships, I do them for people that come on buses. I do them for the destination management companies. Many of you may not be familiar with the destination management company is, but they work locally with national meeting planners, international meeting planners, and set up the logistics of local transportation, dinners and activities and all of that. And most of them stay in Miami Beach, downtown Miami. Getting them to South Day is a major ordeal. It's time limitations. Traffic is awful and it's not getting any better. And that is the big, to me, that is the biggest thing we have to overcome with getting tourism to South Day, at least as far as those visitors are concerned.
You're good with stigma a little bit though, because what I always like to tell everybody, it takes you longer to get from South Beach to Adventure, than it takes from South Beach to Red.
But they don't go to Adventure either, they go.
About a percent, it's not as far as everybody wants it.
It can be, it depends on the time of the day. But anyway, I just wanted to point out that is, you know, one of the biggest challenges of getting people down south is the traffic and that planning for what could happen. And unfortunately, there's no answer to the traffic situation. So I think that all of the ideas I've heard today are fabulous. And I think that they are marketed probably more to individuals than to groups who have that freedom of time. But anyway, I just wanted to say.
That's very, very true. On your note there, it's very, very true. I do own DMC and it's almost impossible. It, just yesterday, it took me two hours, you know, it was raining whenever to get from Miami Beach to Cutler Bay, two hours. So you can't really ask tourists to sit in a bus to see, you know, some site down here. They have to travel two hours down here and two hours back. But I was wondering if maybe those tour buses would be allowed to use the tour transit, I mean, the bus lane that we have. Because that's, that should be easy. And I don't know if that's something we could push through.
That's a good conversation. Okay, I think we're going to move on to question three unless there's any other comments.
Good evening, everybody. So I woke up the morning after Andrew on the third floor stairwell of K West Hospital. This is 92, so of course no phones, we all huddled around on radio. I remember here in Cutler Bay, wall is gone. It kept going, this was gone, this was gone. We're all looking at each other to find gone, what does that mean, gone, right? Because we were just sitting. And so a lot, of course, has transpired since then, there's been a lot of building, rebuilding, new building. What about community building? And I think that's something that takes clearly a lot longer. But just by the show and the sentiment and the comments today, there's a very strong community here. That has really evolved, how that continue to evolve is something I want to look at now. We talked a lot about the marriage of tourism development and community development. So as this area continues to grow, there's a lot of assets, there's a lot of experiences that can be leveraged, the numbers will grow. Can't help that considering the assets that are in place. So how do you also consider quality of life for residents? And how do you think about professional, about personal development and the quality of the schools and the quality of just the community as the quality of the tourism experience also evolves? Does anybody have any comments about, talking about long-term sustainability and the viability of the community?
One of the areas is like we talked about with Redland and the balance of tourism among the residents, you have your stay patients and you have the opportunity for people to come out to beautiful green spaces and farmland and spend time. And that really enhances the quality of life. What we find interesting in all of the work we've done in the last six months and bringing down hundreds of people down here that have never been down to Redland before, is that they've lived here for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and they've never been to Redland. And they're shocked and they come down because, "I can't believe this is like this. I can't believe that this is, you know, in proximity, as opposed to where we live and we never knew about it." So one of the ways to enhance the balance is to give people an opportunity to spend more time in that green space and enjoy it and introduce it to our local community.
I think an asset that people and residents enjoy and also if they are with the tourists, are the development of like farmers' markets, which have also become a great, great areas for incubating mom and pop businesses. Many of us love Zach the Baker Bread. Well, Zach the Baker started at Pine Trust Gardens Farmers Market. And there are so many other businesses that now when you go to the grocery stores, you find products that are made locally, started in a farmer's market, and now they're being marketed in our supermarkets, in grocery stores. I mean, it's a small piece of the pie, but it's part of what makes the community a nice place to live. When you choose where to go on vacation, you want to go to a place that's nice for the people who live there, not just the people who are visiting. And, you know, and I think having some of those small venues, farmers' markets, street fairs, places where people can sell their arts and crafts, make it part of that handmade experience as opposed to just, you know, just buying something, I think can make a difference.
Another question.
Yes, I was last week on Sunday, I was in Coral Gables. I have a friend that lives here in Cutler Bay and she makes banana cakes. So she went to Coral Gables to sell her banana cakes because they have a fair. You know, like you sell anything you want. I mean, I have another one that sells earrings and everything like that. And it was like a community experience for the people of Coral Gables. I think that we should do more activities like that and include the communities and advertise it. And that is a way that we can get closer to one another, know each other better, and then we can grow. I think that investing in our way of life, in our lifestyle and schools and all that is also good because what that will do is to keep us here even more. That's the reason why I came over here, because I want to be, I wanted to enjoy peace and quiet. There is another, there's a place called Polly Square that I go there. And I think it's one of the most beautiful places here down south. And it's just a lady called Frances that she's keeping up with that place. But I think that that role should be, should be a glow more. It's amazing.
Is there, just before, we have another question here. But is that an intentional conversation happening in the community to be more competitive and let, to leverage more local businesses to maintain that local vibe over the decades? That's a conversation you're all having?
You know, one of the things that people say in Miami that we're very diverse and we're all cosmopolitan, but like she said, we're very segregated as well. People are very comfortable in their little silos. But we have so many gems, Richmond Heights, so many little neighborhoods that have stories. And I think we need to highlight, you know, our heritage neighborhoods program that the Bureau is pursuing. I think we need to elevate that, right? Because Homestead and Florida City were incorporated before Miami Day coming. These are neighborhoods that have been existing for generations. They have great stories and great family traditions to share that the rest of the community has no idea until you have to plan a trip to go to Florida City. That is, that's sad to me, that you have to kind of think so hard to enjoy the peace of this community. So these little neighborhoods, I think, in terms of balancing the growth of tourism, we need to teach each other about these little neighborhoods that we have. Naranja has a story to tell, Waddell has a story to tell, Richmond Heights has a story, the West Parry, which is really popular in Bay, right? So, and we can go on and on.
Okay, well, that brings up the conversation we had earlier today too. Coral Gables, they've done all these bike paths and they've made it very more walkable and easier to get around, that's fantastic. And I said, if you all created content to tell people about this, because if you build it, doesn't mean they're going to come. And the answer was, well, no, not really. So the CBB can do a lot to promote what you're doing in these stories that you have that are unique to the neighborhood on a statewide level, on a national level. But that content also has to come from the community and that created that. So if you have these stories, you know, it's incumbent on the neighborhood to create those stories and build those stories so that the Bureau can share them and to talk to each other. But just to create that content and give it life and let it breathe, because like I say, if you build it, doesn't mean it will come. Just because you have those stories doesn't mean if I, when I was living in Miami Beach, I ever heard about it, I would just join my pod on the keys because I didn't know those stories. Is that still the case where people don't know those stories? But this is where the community become involved and build on that so that people can share it. I have another question too, this was asked, we'll come right back here. It's just, because this is interesting to this area. All of the different cities in the county have different rules with Airbnb. What's the sentiment here with having Airbnb and the mayor would like to speak to that?
I wanted to just jump up on that one, but it's like. You know, we've heard the horror stories of Airbnb and being a neighborhood's online party and like that. And actually Cutler Bay did recently just introduce an ordinance which requires Airbnb to register with the city. So we know who they are, who to contact, just basic rules, basic things like that, where we can ensure that the business is, the Airbnb is being respectful of the community standards. And I think that's something that every city or the county should adopt as well. It's not over-restrictive, but it just makes sure that there's accountability for the people that are running it out, to the people that live in the area as well, so.
So legal but regulated. Legal but regulated, okay, excellent. And then?
Thank you, so many questions. Let me go back a second. As far as quality of life for residents, and I guess Airbnb question fits solidly in that. You know, we are a community of small businesses. Entrepreneurship is our middle name. The challenge, of course, is to have those businesses be healthy and grow. Commissioner Moss and I both have incubators that we sponsor. Commissioner Moss and I both have incubators that we sponsor and small business grants that the county gives out in every district. But I, and when they grow, the jobs are local, and then that's good for all of us because it kind of reduces traffic and improves, you know, abstract towers, improves quality of life. So I think that that kind of local business orientation is something that we can really harness and, and maybe there's a way through Convention and Visitors Bureau to highlight, you know, Business of the Month or whatever, that's something locally grown. I can tell you in Miami Incubator, which is called Accelerates Update and is located right next door to Cuthbert Bay Town Hall, we've got a dressmaker and, you know, a security company and a cleaning company and a wedding photography business. And, you know, these are all, you know, wonderful, and these are people who live here and add, you know, that community feel. And I think people like to do business with their neighbors. So if that would be a way that, you know, this sort of goes into the economic development side of the equation more so maybe than the tourism side, but again, if we're, yeah, it does all play together, and that's why it's something we want to explore. It's not just about the tourism. It is also about the quality of life for living and working here. So I just think there's a lot that we can do to promote it. Wasn't mentioned that we have received a federal grant from the Economic Development Administration, which has just gone out for who's going to be the consultant to coordinate it. We have to have people in mind. We get to be part of it, but it's, South Florida Regional Planning Council is the fiscal sponsor together with the county, and the idea is to take these ideas and on the economic development side, build out a strategy that we can implement. So all of us, you know, obviously Bill knows all about that, so he's going to participate actively, but we want to make sure you all know as well. I guess you'll have a list of who's participated, and we can include people in those discussions as well. And there is always more to explore.
Another question.
Speaking of Airbnb issue, I mean, because that translates to other things we've talked about today, wedding venues, and we heard talking about all these interesting opportunities that are taking place right now. And if we could get more support in, you know, from the county levels in different areas to kind of coordinate communication, because what's happening right now is the county is actually coming in and deciding and shutting down wedding venues. And we have ordinances in place statewide that don't allow that to happen, but for some reason that part's happening. We actually have a meeting about it tomorrow with a lot of folks. And then also the Airbnb side, but, you know, with having no hotel footprint down here, you would think that in the unincorporated part of Miami Dade, you'd want to embrace Airbnb, and instead they select the just unincorporated Miami Dade in the past, Airbnb lost Miami Dade County. That almost disallows you to do it because you have to occupy the resident permit in six months, and they put other restrictions that the state doesn't even require, and they put special requirements here specifically. So if we want to grow this region without hotels and a lot of the other things that we talked about, the wedding venues and the businesses and the growth of everything, you know, today, we should try to see how we can work together with the bureau and other people to try to get the county more in sync with our agricultural laws and the state that say that we can't do these things. And there's maybe just a misunderstanding at the county level of them just following what they're supposed to do with no intent. They just, they're following the protocol for what they think is supposed to be, you know, be done. But that's actually being diminished as we speak right now, so.
This is a big question. If anyone else had any comments about that?
Hello, I'm Jesse Revell with London Foster, and talking about Airbnb, we're products of that. We used it. To go back to my old neighborhood up in New Jersey, it was the best thing I could have done. I would have never experienced the neighborhoods like we're all talking about through a hotel. I was inside in England. My kids got to go down with me to the local market. We got to go to the old Ace Hardware, which is not really Ace, maybe the originals, but we got to experience the name of it that way. Yeah, they just talk about Airbnb. I have no investments in it, I have nothing to do with it, but my experience and some that I hope get into some, just because they call me, hey, Jesse, listen, I want to stay down, but I don't want to go hotel. Is there a Red, Red and Red Race? No, there is no Red and Red Race. Hard to come by down here at least. So next thing was an Airbnb. Yeah, it has these little things here and there to talk about, but I think that's in a very, very congested area, so they do have, but majority of the time, if you want to get people to the neighborhoods, you want to get people to learn about your community, you're going to put some hotel, some, and they're really awful, the way these hotels look right off the side of the road, what they've developed there are awful. They have no character. What is the main thing that you find every time you go somewhere, you drop somewhere? You look for character. You look for things that have something, that can say something about the place. And that's what the homes do. They bring them. So I like what he's been bringing up, but I forgot your name, but that's the first time I've, I've wanted to ask him, and how do I even know about this? Well, it's through social media. Social, I go, I'm a realtor, I'm involved in a lot of different things, love our community. I've been in Cuthbert Bay now, we've been here going up fifteen years. Came in in two thousand and four, just as we're voting for going through Cuthbert Ridge to Cuthbert Bay. We're in that trend, and I love what we have.
If anyone else want to answer that specific question, I think the camera point or supportive point, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Burt. I'm actually working from Wood Springs Hotel, right down south here. So there is hotels in the area. We're actually right off of one hundred and sixtyth and one hundred and seventeenth Avenue, close to Metro Zoo. And I'm actually here with Tanya, but she's actually the general manager as well. But we're here, I mean, I actually lived here for twenty years. I've actually moved down to Cuthbert Ridge since two thousand, and I've actually worked at different other hotels in the area as well. But this hotel is actually fairly new, it's almost two years old. We have one hundred and twenty-three rooms. And we would love to partner with everyone. We are an extended stay hotel, and we provide services for not just one night, more for people who are coming to stay here, construction, everything. We have limited service, but it's, we're extended stays, and that's what we provide, to bring the community. We want the community to have a place that is like home.
So you're in this industry. Do you know of more hospitality product coming into the area? Is there something that you see growing?
I see that this community is actually a little bigger, especially in the rural area of close to Metro Zoo, that all the construction is actually working. And it's something that we, I do believe that we should stay native to our per se. We should bring more community together because it also develops children there. Because I see that we're kind of changing the whole aspect of how the community is looking, which is great, but we're losing the element. We're losing the element of actually having history.
Our name applies to you, Andy.
In our hotel, we actually have twelve employees, since it's an extended stay. But usually in all the other hotels around the area, they have about twenty-six.
This is always my favorite question. I can go, I'm sure we could all go on and on. I think that we're getting to where we have to move on to the next question.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So I'm the cleanup hitter. Final question here, which is really kind of bringing us full circle. When you think about the opportunities that we've identified, when you think about some of the challenges that we also kind of said, Lloyd, we kind of need to fix this, one question would be, given the role that you may know or come to know about GM CBB, what it exists to do, do you think there are some initiatives based on the conversation we've had today that they could undertake to address some of what we've talked about? To kind of help, help deal with promoting the opportunities you've talked about, help deal with maybe overcoming some of the challenges that we've identified?
Here.
Mayor.
Recently, you go on cruises, excuse me. You go on cruises to Bahamas, Key West area like that, you're able to get off one boat and get on another boat and go someplace else. You really only have that here in Miami. You get off the boat, you get on the bus, and you go someplace and sit in traffic. You get on a boat, you can go to Aliquita. You get on a boat, you could go to Biscayne Park. Again, I mentioned the swing available there. There's an opportunity to go ahead and develop those areas where it could service the cruise industry a lot better than what we currently do now. A plethora of things you could do, take them there by the water, ride in my bus.
Great, great point. Certainly, one of the key areas that we've identified, a key partner to Miami is the cruise industry, and if we could work with them to just get a percent of those people to stay an extra day here in Miami Dade County and see some of what's here, automatically that kicks up a tremendous amount of additional tourism. So definitely a key audience, and then it's a question of how do we connect with them? And I do think that is definitely a role for GM CBB because they know the cruise lines. So that represents an opportunity. We also, through this process, identified with American Airlines, it is now going to allow extended stopover in Miami if you're going, coming through Miami at a very minimal produce rate. So again, here's, that's, that's what we want to hear, right? Facilitating people spending more time in Miami, and that means they're spending more money in Miami Dade County, and that means they're getting out to see what's here. So it's those kinds of partnerships that absolutely GM CBB can drive and facilitate. So those are two really good examples. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to see the GM CBB create a portal, for lack of a better way to describe it, to collect all of the information that neighborhoods are doing, and then use the marketing tools that they have to disseminate that information countywide and make it relevant internationally by placing it somewhere on their website where it could be news for you, by you, and the communities have the opportunity to tell the story, to tell the story about the community, about the events that are going on. But let GM CBB be the hub for all of that information. They don't have to edit it, let it just go as it is, not to create additional work. And I'm not trying, I know that you all do that already, because I work with Andy to help him to develop a lot of those stories that you just keep static on the website and update them annually, but to make that a little more robust, allow the community...
A little bit mind-laid.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes, yes, super small. Absolutely. And to have that portal just right there on the website and use their database. You all have a huge database to get the information out.
So one of the things we've talked about, Ed, over the course of this, is kind of like that last mile of connection, right from the local communities to the tourists. And if something like that, I can see where it then becomes searchable, then now if I'm a tourist looking for culinary experience or food on your table, boom, this popped up. If you populated it with an event, with a story, then that popped up up out of my search here in Miami Dade County. So those sorts of things, I can create that opportunity, and technology today, digital's the way to do it. So that is certainly something that can be explored. Yes, ma'am?
We have one question.
It's a good evening. Go ahead. My first reaction when you were talking, when somebody talked about, when you were talking about people staying longer from the cruise ships was lots of love. If you look at the, if you talk to any of the operators of tours that come off the cruise ships, numbers are down because the cruise ships are charging so much more for the tours. Most people, I'd say probably sixty percent of the people that go on a post-cruise tour are looking to kill time between the time they get off the ship and the time they go to the airport. And the cruise ships have raised the prices so much that they're going to the airport. They're going to spend another three or four hundred dollars to take a quick trip out to the airports for two hours. But as you were all talking, it, it, I thought about the idea of working with the cruise hookers, kind of bypassing the cruise ships to let them know that these other options are available and set them up that way.
So that's their packages.
So their packages, they include that beyond the cruise ship booking, yeah.
Right, great point.
Many years, I've been around in this community long enough to remember when tourism was over there to the east and everything else was here. I think GM CBB has done a great job in recognizing that tourism really happens at the local community level, and I think they, I think they're in the great, in a great direction. We would not have more to explore if it wasn't for their, you know, their recognition of what we need to do to promote this area, and other neighborhoods around the county have benefited as well. I think it's really important to just dig deeper, try to make those community connections, connect the information, like this lady said, make sure everybody knows what's going on. But I, I mean, it's been such a sea change over the last ten, fifteen years from where we were to what we think of tourism today and how grander it has become, how connected to the communities it has become, and I think they just need to do more of that.
Well, right, we've also been talking today about this, the whole issue about our own residents of Miami Dade County aren't aware of the richness that's here. So this also becomes the opportunity for more education and knowledge because they are our best salespeople to their relatives and friends as well. So this idea of how do we kind of kick up the overall level of knowledge about the vastness of the experiences that are available here even amongst the residents. And then with that pride, they help us sell.
I was just whispering to my friend here from Zoo Miami. Sometimes I wonder if there's a conspiracy to not connect us to the rest of the county, but I'll leave that in the inbox. But, Phil, I don't know if this has been discussed, why there's, couldn't there be a ferry from downtown to South Dade service? Is there anyone that is exploring that in the next five years where the traffic to come down, is that an option? What's preventing that?
Probably the time, you've got to have the customer base. You know, businesses will start with customers. So I think they tried the water taxi just from the mainland to the beach, and I think it's the distances that sometimes get in the way. But, you know, you've had the high-speed ferry to the islands, but I think coming, coming south, it, you've got to have the customers. And so apparently the customers are not there, but it's something to explore.
Well, this, too, has come up, as you might imagine, in several of these, and, you know, water is one of the biggest assets that you have, that you have, and so the ability to get out on it in a variety of different ways, but if we could also use that to overcome a challenge, which is travel and transportation, wouldn't that be great? So again, the issue is how can we make sure this is being explored at all appropriate levels? And if there are barriers, what are those barriers, and how can we maybe overcome some of those barriers? So it has come up several times, and I think it's definitely worth some discussion because I'm sure for myself prefer to travel to parts of the county by, by water. What a great way to experience what's here, and if I could see a time off the island.
To piggyback on that, many years ago, there was an idea to try to, transportation for workers, to try to get to, you know, from the South Dade area to downtown by water. And that was the same thing, just not sure whether there was enough business, and number one, we had a lot of shallow waters around there, so finding a spot we could leave from is difficult as well. So perhaps maybe to have that conversation, not just for businesses but for tourism as well, partnering together, maybe could be initiative at work that way.
Right, and five years is a long time. A lot's changed.
I just wanted to talk about...
We get your mic, hold on, we can get your mic.
I do surveys for a living, so it's very important the way that you ask that question about customers, because I know, I looked at the county commission meeting when they talked about, there were no riders who would demand for this high rail. I'm not a bus rider, but I would ride a fast train. So if you're counting the number of bus occupants, that's not the same as a high, high rail. Yeah. So as it relates to the ferry, I just am asking if that is possible, that there is going to be some type of exploration as to whether or not that is an option or not. Does it be very deliberate about what the question is? Because you can always justify something by asking the wrong question. So anyway, that was just my question.
Thank you. We have another question here with this lady.
In relation to telling the story, like Marlon mentioned, I think it's really, I think a great source of telling the story. I think we can better engage filmmakers, videographers, bloggers in the community to help share stories of the region. I know every opportunity that the DRE State gets from Visit Florida to get film opportunities, we jump on that because we can reach markets and international visitors, national and local communities to help share the story through video. So I think that's really important, and it's costly for organizations that aren't usually able to do that. So I think there's ways we can look into that and better engage in that as well.
Certainly, video's the way to go. Video and digital is the way to make that happen, and to your point, how can we do that collaborative... And to your point, how can we do that collaboratively to bring that cost down? And how can you actually crowdsource some of that? Because people are doing that on their own all the time. And is there a way to pull in some of that to use it as a cheaper way to market? Yes, mayor?
Okay, so transportation, I know is an issue. Sorry. I know it's an issue, but also the perception of distance. I think a lot of us, I think, are a little spoiled that, oh, it's not five minutes away, so we can't get to it. I know you mentioned that originally I was born and raised in California. There's a lot of distance between everything. But I believe for us, the distance, it's worth it to travel to get to the experience that we want to enjoy. So maybe changing that perception in the community that everything is so far. I mean, I know to get to an industry event, I have to go 45 an hour, an hour and a half, and I'll do it because all the industry events are in the north. I mean, Deering, since the law knows this. But we're always, we're always happy to host events. So if you'd like to do it at the zoo, we can do that. But I just feel like the perception is just that we're too far. And we're really not. So I just feel like we have to start changing what the community perceives as far.
And the flip side of that being that the difference is worth the distance, right? To really tell those stories and that it's worth taking that, maybe it's not even as long as some people perceive, but that the result, when you get here, is worth the distance.
Mr. Johnson?
Not to be redundant about something we talked about earlier, but one of the solutions we have is really immediate. And I'm hoping one of the takeaways today could be that we really look at and explore the CSX rail lines that already come down here. They literally stop in the zoo, they go right there, literally at the entrance of the zoo. They go to Fruit and Spice Park, they go through the busiest part of Kendall, most densely populated areas. The tracks are already existing there. Everything, the infrastructure is already there. You're talking about a timeline of 12 to 24 months where all the things we've talked about today would be immediate in the sense of bringing down all the people, you know, from central, from downtown, all the areas with the infrastructure that we have right now. You know, if you're talking about the five year plan, you could really put in place and say, how can we go for the next five years, instill infrastructure that is more immediate than any of the other things we talked about? It's already there, it's the least expensive option. And it's something with a new park of urgent trains coming in because, again, another area we touched on, they're building trains directly into the port, okay? So it's going to be crossing out directly into the port into, you know, where the new urgent ships are going to be docked and things like that. So you're going to have the ability for people to travel from Orlando to here on high speed rail, the urgent train, and then catch that same kind of process. If we can come to South Dade, then you're talking to structure for cruise ship people that could take a day trip on trains. We're talking about coming down here and doing it. All the things we talked about today could be touched on if maybe we put a concerted effort to explore those lines to cure all the things we talked about.
Great, thank you. What else? Yes, mayor?
And right on that, I mean, the train transfer is a way to use. But maybe one initiative to put out, to, is to provide a bus, a cool bus, like something that just, a bus already is cool to ride. And then maybe on Mondays, we're hitting Dade. On Tuesdays, you know, when you're going toward, I mean, the outfit malls have gotten smart. They provide the service and they actually charge pretty penny for, to get them, to spend more at the mall. But if it's, if it's the CDB that can provide a bus, that each day we take a different destination and, you know, it's going to be year round, people get used to Mondays, Dade, Tuesdays, whatever. Maybe that's one way to get people there and get them environmentally friendly and, you know, to promote that destination. And then maybe in the fall year or, I don't know, what are we going to do, six months or so, then you choose another one so everybody benefits a little bit from it.
Great, thank you. Another good idea. What else? Yes, sir?
Ryan with MiamiBeachVisitorCenter.com. And I'm not going to say anything that hasn't been said before, but I definitely think that the initiative of having a visitor center for the area as a whole, not necessarily just for a city, we, a good part that you can have trawls go from, you can have buses go to and from, you can have people that want to go to that area and then venture off to different places. Maybe Deering would have a visitor center to use it for a little while, but having a visitor center for the area as a whole to allow people to come in and out. And then all the local businesses can share the information to that visitor center, and then they can piggyback that to GM CBB's big hub and share it with all their people. But I definitely think supporting a visitor center in the local area, not just for the city, is important.
Great, thank you. Probably have time for one more comment. If anyone has something burning, they want to add before we close this out. Yes, mayor?
I didn't actually come here tonight realizing that this was going to be South Dade specific. So I did have something that I wanted to talk to GM CBB about.
Right.
This is a really important thing. Now, and I said, I work as a tour guide and I work with many clients. Is there something that GM CBB can do with, actually specifically Miami Beach and downtown Miami, with the police regarding parking and things for tour buses? It's become monumentally a problem touring. They're, they're towing off buses and charging them $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 for being parked in the wrong place. So the major bus company in the area, Academy, will only stop in two places that the police have given them. It's becoming a real challenge to take groups. And these groups are a major, I mean, I have 50 people on buses, that's 25 cars or so that aren't on the, on the street. So I'm helping relieve traffic. And these people are going to the beach and they're spending money, they're having meals, et cetera, et cetera, visiting. But parking and pulling over for the buses becomes monumentally a problem.
Great, we'll take note of that. It definitely ties into this transportation issue. It ties into a lot of the big issues that we know we've got to grapple with. But this is just kind of another piece of it from the standpoint of real estate and how we share that amongst everybody. It speaks of quality of life. Parking's a big issue, particularly on the beach. And bus parking, so it ties into a lot of the issues that we've talked about today. But nevertheless, you're right, a lot of tourists are on buses. And therefore, we've got to make sure they feed into this somehow in a way that works for everybody. So point taken. And we are taking notes. Same, I'll go from there. Well, I will let Mr. Talbot have the last word, but from our standpoint, I just want to say thank you for your energy and really being willing to... This is exactly what this was designed to do. And you're probably the second group that has been the most energized, with the most ideas and the most willingness to share. I think almost everyone in this room shared, and that's really great. And I think we picked up a lot of wonderful ideas. Talbot?
Yeah. I don't like it here. Now, you know, once again, I grew up here. I grew up here. My first, first place I lived. I worked for the Metro Dade Parks Department. Was involved in the Land for Zoo Miami. And I already had any Thompson Park, Black Point Park, so my, my team down. My tag. And by the way, this is a voice of us. We have more elected officials here than we've had at any session. They were at the commission meeting for 12 hours today. And they're here. They're probably going to do something else, but thank you all for coming here. I think it shows your interest in Mayor. I'm going to have a little different takeaway, a little different takeaway, having grown up here. You know, we talked about having this be in a day trip. I think one thing, somehow, South Dade needs to figure out what it wants to be, not what it is, but not what it isn't what it is. And I think, have you talked to anybody about this? But it's coming, it needs to be a destination, not, not a, oh, a day trip. I think you've got enough energy and critical mass in storytelling and businesses and neighborhoods just to put it together. It needs to be a destination, not just an afterthought. So that's my takeaway. That made me out of the box. I mean, if you go back, you know, five years ago, we had the same structure. You know, the pieces are bigger, same issue. You know, we have to have transportation, but become a destination. Thank you very much. You talked about high speed rail. There's a thing called American Dream Miami that's going to be a big, massive destination up in Northwest Dade. You've got places like the Rowell. A lot of places are going. You have, you can have a seat at the table, but now is the time so that you don't become Coconut Rowell. No, I'd wrote on Coconut Rowell too. It was a place to be. And now it's a place, what is it? To figure out what you want to be. So we, the Bureau are your partner. We don't have all the ideas and we're very good listeners. Thank you.